We would invite all who would like to join us in a recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, Lord of Heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy is the kingdom, and the hour, and the glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. Shelby City Council meeting is called to work. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please Mr. Brown.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gates?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin.
I may say for the record that Councilman McGlocklin informed me and Councilman Martin earlier that he could be late this evening to the meeting. He does intend to be here and hopefully be forward by legislation if we're ahead of course, so it's that notation. I'm now dispensed with a reading of the Journal from October 17, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense with the reading of the Journal from October 17, 2022. Roll call, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Now comes the time for public comment. If everyone has a comment they would like to make to council, now is your opportunity to come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comment.
I'm in South Wall of the Pennsyl Street, Shelby, Ohio. I, um, I had asked for evidence, and I'd asked for evidence, and I'd asked for evidence. I came down here and I made an hour-long statement on tape about criminality, the many, many, many crimes that have been committed against me by your police department, especially your Chief of Police. After five times I put it off, five times I have it on a piece of paper, because I knew nobody here cared about my stolen motorcycle. That's not why I was being lured to the police station, your Justice Center. It's like calling Planned Parenthood a daycare center. I came down here, finally made a statement. I demanded immunity and brought a witness. I want my exculpatory evidence. I told him I was being set up by your Chief of Police. I told him what he'd done to me and what he was going to do to me, and now it's five years later. I did 10 months in jail, and no one even told him that you had this evidence, that was exculpatory. No one even told them that I was set up, and you had all this evidence and didn't do anything with it. And now, if your mayor destroys my evidence, I swear to God I will sue this city for all it has, man. I want my exculpatory evidence. To take the people who you had arrested in Crawford County shows that all that shit was planted under my seat by the arresting senior officer, and I can't even get a copy of that. What they did to me in that jail was inhumane, what you people have done to me. What you, you should be ashamed of yourself, man. You, all of this because God told me, God put it in my heart to talk to you. Sodium fluoride. Adolf Hitler did that. He scraped it out of the chimneys, made the Jews drink it in their water. And you put us on the same demo plant as he did, the Jews. There is no reason to put that in our water. What it does, the fluorosis and the, what it does, man, it slows the synaptic nerves firing in the brain. Depending on exposure, you, you make everyone mentally retarded, and it closes the pineal gland, calcifies it. You can't get in touch with God without a pineal gland. You can't go to heaven without it. None of you have that right. Stop that today. Stop poisoning us today. That is not right what you do. You all have a responsibility to us, and you have a responsibility. And what you did to, I'm a vet, and you took my Second Amendment away. I've said in that taped interview, I know what he's doing. He's going to set me up so Daryl Hawke can kill me because I won't have a Second Amendment. And he did exactly what I said he's going to do, and I can't get any evidence. Do I have to have a combination for a lot to get truth? You can't have justice in a justice center without truth as a basis. And that Constitution was my Constitution before you stole every right I had. You, you stole everything. This is what is wrong with America in this room right now. Don't gloss this over like it's just shiny. The last time I was in here, I tried to talk, and there was snickerdack when I left. Did you bring him here to my neighbors? Because I showed up. This is what's wrong with America. This is a death of a thousand cucks to the Constitution. What you've done to me is indicative of what's going on all over this United States. The United States. You all should be ashamed, man. Fix this, please, man. What the heck? You know I didn't do that. I told you I was being set up. Please, man, I don't want to hurt anybody. I don't want to tarnish anybody, but I swear to God I will sue this place for everything I can. I will sue, I will, I will sell everything I have. What you've done to me is wrong, man. I didn't do anything to anyone. I've never hurt anyone. Now, I'm a felon at 60 years old. I'm a disabled vet. I didn't do anything wrong, but disagree with you. Shame on you, man. You just threw my life away. You just threw me away. I am not a bad person. Simple people are not just simple, and people who are powerful and complex. I have complex thought patterns, just like all of you. What you've done to me is terrible, man. Just because I was silent and let you do it for so many years, how long's it been? Seven, eight years since you've been terrorizing me? I know time flies when you're having fun, man. Jeez, man. I've never hurt anybody. You let Daryl Hall do anything when he rode my motorcycle up and down the road in front of me? And I called your police. They wouldn't even make a report. The attempted murder, he watched a house burn. He sat on his porch drinking a 12-pack of beer. With the $15 he got for burning that man's house down, he bought a 12-pack of beer and watched it. He told me he did it and how he did it, and I got thrown out of the police station for trying to report it. Did you tell that man on South Street that you knew who burned his house down? No, you let that man move in and stay two doors from me to terrorize me, just to terrorize me. All these felonies he's committed subsequently, they're on y'all, man, and he's committed a lot of them. That's, it's treason, man, you know? You stole my civil liberties, and I didn't do anything wrong. And I've never hurt anybody. I've never, I've never hurt anyone. Oh, I'm sorry. Dude, just don't, yeah, that. One of your parishioners asked me, so what are you saying? Is he so obtuse? When you told me I had to go through Lance Combs to get the information to prove he did this to me, they went, what, is he evil or obtuse? I don't know. I don't know. How do you answer that? I, man, I'm sorry if I presented myself wrongly. I didn't even read my notes or anything. So much, man, there's just so much. I didn't do anything to anyone. Please fix it. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Hearing none, we'll move forward then to reports from standing special committees. The Community Economic Development Committee did not meet today. Public Works and General Operations Committee, Councilman Robb.
Uh, we did not meet either, and I want to apologize for not having, uh, but Stacy know that I was going to be out of town. I guess they got caught up in preparations and forgot to do that, and so there was no meeting.
Parking Committee, Councilman Roberts, there was no meeting as well. We're still gathering facts there, I understand. We're syncing together.
I was still healing, so.
And you're still healing.
That's why we didn't have a parking.
And the Safety Committee.
We did meet. We met on November 2nd. Chief Thompson reported fire news that a second round of interviews will take place on November 10th, so we're waiting on that to happen. And with that, when we start hiring some, some people, then we're going to have to figure out how to expand the firehouse to accommodate more personnel and, and the equipment. So, you know, talk a little bit about that, and it's still, you know, there's still a lot of conversation to come for that. And he also, he also commented that since the takeover of the EMA around things that are running well, everybody's stepping up to the plate and doing, doing everything that they can to make sure that that, that works while we're shorthanded. So we thank them for, for that. Health Department news, we have two new nuisances that have been turned over to the prosecutor. Health Department personnel attended a meeting about drug abuse, mental health, and suicide. And if there is some, some sort of mold issue upstairs at City Hall. Moving on to police news, one dispatcher was sworn in and would have started today, I think, and another dispatcher that left in March will be rehired very soon. She decided she wanted to come back, and so that will put us to, to four dispatchers, which is, is everybody we need there. And Police Department, we're still five officers down, but we have one higher in progress or in process, so we'll get that one hired in, then we will, we'll have four down. And the Civil Service, the people that were interviewed before don't have to retake the Civil Service, I understand, so that process may, might help us speed up hiring the rest of our, of our police force.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts. So any comments or questions in regard to Councilman Roberts' report? Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I did have, after we talked about the mold issue, I did talk to Mr. Gates, and it's not something that, at the time, I thought it was something that was going unnoticed or untaken care of, but that is not the situation. Things have been done to try to, to take care of that, and it just, it keeps resurfacing, so, and I know that I'm sure that other things are going to be tried to neutralize.
Yep. Subsequent to that meeting, Mr. Gates signed it up and made a personal inspection of things. Approximately 5,000 square feet of surface area between ceilings, walls, and floorings, and about 13 square feet where there is an apparent mold issue on some surface, so, uh, so you can, just by observation of that untrained eye, 99, 199% of the upstairs is not contaminated with mold. So sometimes you see something that just takes all your, gets all of your attention. But, uh, we have contacted Superior Cleaning Services, and they are coming tomorrow morning to make their inspections, and then subsequent professional inspection remediation work will take place. I think the particular concern is that there's condensation issues around the, the registers, where especially in the summer where you have ice cold air needing warmer air. So we want to certainly take care of the source as well as remedying any mold out. Any, any bit of mold we know is serious, but again, it's, it's, it's not as widespread as one might have thought on the description. Uh, the dispatchers, um, we did swear in one of the dispatchers, the one that had come back, dispatcher Hatcher, is sworn in and should be starting here shortly. But the other dispatcher did change her mind, so we're, we have another candidate that is in some of the final stages of interview and background checks, so hopefully that can be able to work out.
Mr. Martin. Just wondering if the Health Department gave an STD report? It's accustomed to getting those now. It was not noted.
It was not noted. I did not put it in the report, but they did.
All right. Now, are there any other questions? Just want to make sure that we don't have a scourge of gonorrhea.
All. We, we, actually, we do. Not scourge, but there's cases, but, and I also didn't want them to report that we had 30 deaths and 23 births, or, I'm sorry, 30 births, 23 deaths, so. And that's not necessarily in the city, but that's, that comes through our, our health department.
Mr. Gates.
Actually, we didn't necessarily have that many births or deaths. We had that many birth certificates and death certificates issued, so those could have been from either births or deaths decades ago. I misunderstood a month ago and in error reported that we had that many births and deaths in the month of September. That wasn't the case. That's how many certificates they issued.
And then, may I say, since we're kind of under with the Safety Committee with the Health Department, our department did receive word today from Crestwood that they are dealing with 19 cases of COVID, 13, rather, 13 cases of COVID-19. We contacted High Department Health. Our Director of Nursing went to site, and they are following all the protocols, all procedures, and it looks like they have everything in order. This is not the first go-around for any long-term care facility, but they are, again, they have, it looks like things are being processed as they should. So we will, at the beginning, test, I understand, in 10 days. So this is the first time for, for our Director of Nursing to have dealt with this, and he's doing the great job of making sure, dotting all the i's across the t's.
Morning. Now, come to reports of city officials.
Mr. Mayor, if we could note for the record that Councilman McGlocklin has arrived.
Councilman McGlocklin is here. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilman Gates. I have the, some motions for confirmations here, and so I'll just say, since the last meeting, busy about the usual business of the mayor's office, emails, phone calls, attending meetings, committee meetings, and the such, and the like. I've participated in the dedication of a K, pre-KQ8 educational facility, and that was a wonderful occasion. And also, we had our rhythm cutting, opening Main Street on Friday, which was really a nice evening as well. So with that, I will entertain a motion for confirmation. We have four of them on the agenda. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I move the council to confirm the appointment of Brad Newbank to the Civil Service Commission, the appointment of Stacy Gunner to the Community Improvement Corporation, the appointment of Lyndon Klein to the Health Advisory, Health Department Advisory Board, and the appointment of Janine Perry to the Health Department Advisory Board.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts to confirm the appointments of those, so read, Brad Newbank and Stacy Gunner, Lyndon Klein, and Janine Perry to those various boards and commissions. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Thank you. Move then on to the report from our Director of Finance, Mr. Crum.
Thank you, sir. Nothing too unusual in, in my departments. We are working through the last few bits with both the Health Department and the overall audit. And I think that their, their engagement letter said November 30th. I'd love to have a draft for, for council for that. We'll see how it goes. So that's coming along. No big surprises with the end of all the late filers, well, late fathers. The, the extended tax return deadline of October 15th, that went very well. Nothing unusual there. The Tax Department's working on, working with the law director to continue to process nonfilers and such. That's really all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from Mr. Crum in regard to this report? Hearing none, we'll move forward then to Mr. Ister, Law Director.
Mayor, routine business in my office, nothing significant to report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from Mr. Ister? Move on then to Mr. Gates, Project Court Data.
Thank you, Mayor. Said we did finish the vast majority of downtown project. We had the roads open and very glad for that. There's some electrical issues and just some fine touch-ups and a little more cleanup, and that'll be complete. Black Fork Commons project, they did remove all the brick and so forth. They have a suitable base in now. Just finalizing getting our permits to Little County and everything, and then we'll start getting some foundations and stuff in for the pump house and for the rest of the buildings there yet this year, maybe do a little bit before winter strikes too hard. We did work with Ashland Rail. The storm line that we talked about before is under right now, so wait for rain, see how it works, but it should work a lot better out there, so we're happy for that. And, um, we, our paving survey that we had done last time, that we created our five-year plan, was five years old, so it was time to update that, so we did hire that company, and I got in with them on Monday to get the results of that, and then we can use that to foreplay the next five years, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gates.
One question, well, comment that kind of goes along with that. The, since nobody from Park Department is here, the disc-off course, it didn't, do you know, Joe, if it's been finished yet? It's, it's, it's coming along if it isn't finished, so news, news from Park Board. It starts over by the tennis courts and wraps all through Southern Park, so.
That's what those things are, those white, I don't know if they were Christmas decorations or disc-off.
Yeah, those are the goals for the, for the disc-off. The chains catch the discs and they fall in the basket.
That's really cool. All right. Mr. Gates, any comments or questions for Mr. Gates? Move forward then to new businesses. Is there any new business to be brought before council this evening? Hearing none, move forward to unfinished business, former ice planet property, nothing to report right in this instance. The future use of Main Street Fire Station, nothing new, I'm not fond of that business one. Would you have any unfinished business? Mr. Martin.
The future use of the Main Street Fire Station, the, we have a kind of estimated timeline, and I think we're gonna...
We'll put our heads together here administratively and see if we can build something of a timeline. And the other, anything on unfinished business? Let's move forward then to the sanction.
Orders number 24, 2022, amending section 1,026.03, trimming of trees required of chapter 1,026, street trees of the economized ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
First second reading? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the second reading of orders number 24, 2022. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, at the last council meeting, I talked about, look at the actual text of the ordinance, the third line, which talks about a penalty of 25%, and that penalties are something that courts levy. So with that in mind, I move to amend that, that phrase, "a penalty," be replaced by the phrase "an administrative fee." Again, in the third line.
From the bottom.
From the bottom, yes, thank you. Replace the words "a penalty" with the words "an administrative fee."
Second question, okay. We have a motion of Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts to, in the third line in, under the section one there, third line of the main paragraph, to replace the words "a penalty" with the words "an administrative fee." Have more clear on that? That is the amendment on the table. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
That orders number 24, 2022 passes second reading.
Orders number 25, 2022, declaring the necessity for the continuation of a levy of 2/10% income tax for the purpose of maintaining roadway and sidewalk improvement and repair.
Move for a reading. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the first reading, orders number 25, 2022. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, uh, I'm looking at section 12, where it talks perhaps shall become effective on January 1st of 2023, but then I'm looking at section 4, where it talks about a five-year period from January 1st of 2024 through December 31st of 2028.
Mr. Gates has his hand up here.
That should be 2024, section 12. Levy is still being collected through all of 2023, so this would be, to give them the bank balance to get started for, starting that on January 1st, 2024. So that would need to be amended, my fault.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I ask you now just to consent that section 12, the year be changed from 2023 to 2024.
You've all heard, it reads, the one need to change 2023 to 2024. Are there any objections to that? A unanimous consent? And Shelby. Mr. Martin.
I ask a unanimous consent that right above it, the very top of that same page, where it says, "for the income tax right by that," it says, "commencing on January 1st, 2023," putting that to 2024 as well. Can you see where I'm at there?
Yes, sir. So in that very top paragraph, January 1st, 2023, would be January 1st, 2024. Are there any objections to making that change? If not, it'll Shelby's home in. Any further discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I'm looking at, at section 5, talking about the, the election, this upcoming mail. I would ask the clerk to check with the Board of Elections and get an estimate of what the cost of that election would be. I would suggest he wait perhaps till next week before he contacts the Board.
For some longer.
The phone would ring and ring and ring perhaps, but.
Mr. Crum?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gates.
I did talk with Mr. Duncall over there. He said, you know, depending on city official races, if there's going to be more than two in a race, or, he says it does look like Dayspring will be having a countywide election that day too, so there would be something else going on, so.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Take the roll call vote on orders number 25, 2022, first reading. Mr. Crum.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Orders number 25, 2022, passing the first reading.
Orders number 26, 2022, amending chapter 1,044, sewer charges, section 1,044.02, conditions of service, rate schedule E, rate adjustment provision of the economized ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio. rate adjustment provision of the Econified Ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move first reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the first reading of Orders number 26, 2022. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, in section two, paragraph E, there's a reference to the most current consumer price index. I, I, I did some research recalling something from an economics class I had years ago. There is no single consumer price index. There are five different consumer price indices. There's the CPIW, that's for way, urban wage earners and clerical workers. The CPIU for all urban consumers. There's the core CPI, which excludes goods with high price volatility, such as food and energy. There's the C, CPIU, which is the same as the CPIU. But it wa, but the weights are updated each month. And then finally, there's the CPIE, which is for the elderly. So, um, since the, this has to do with the water department and, and food is not a, a, a purchase item at the, at the, uh, in the water department, I think that is then the, the CPI that we should, uh, we should use here. So, um, my suggestion would be that in that rule, uh, excuse me, in the other, in paragraph E, where it makes reference, third line, the most current consumer price index, I move that we insert the word "core" between the word "current" and the word "consumer."
Is that spelled with capital C or?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts. In section two, paragraph E, the third line down, the phrase 100% of the most current, and then inserting the word "core," capital C, and continuing consumer price index. Core consumer price index. That is the amendment that is on the floor. Discussion on that amendment? Mr. Gates?
Just more clarification. I think when we hear the word, um, consumer, the phrase "consumer price index", that it most likely is a reference to the CPIW for urban wage earners and clerical workers. That's the one, for example, that is being used to calculate the increase in social security benefits. So, that, that is probably the most generic of the consumer price indices.
Well, we've all received an education in the fact of the CPI, so thank you for that. Any further discussion on that amendment? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob? Or, sorry, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
That motion to amend passes. Any further discussion? I'm voting, I'm voting on the main motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Orders number 26, 2022 passes its first reading.
Orders number 27, 2022. Amending chapter 1,040, Water, section 1,040.04, Rules, Regulations, and Fixed Charges for Municipal Water Systems, Rule 43 of the Econified Ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for three?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the first reading of Orders number 27, 2022. Move, discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, likewise, in this ordinance, in rule 43, the third line down, to insert the word "core" with a capital C between the word "current" and the word "consumer."
Is that unanimous consent? Is that a motion?
I, I, I made a motion.
Okay. I didn't hear that, sorry, Council. So, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin. Uh, in the third line, under the paragraph entitled Rule 43, to place the word "core," as indicated before, the most current core consumer price index. That is the motion. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
That motion to amend passes. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote on the main motion. Mr. Crum?
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Orders number 27, 2022 passes its first reading.
Resolution number 63, 2022. Identifying the partner and grantee to the prior year 2022 Shelby Community Housing Impact and Preservation CHIP Program and acknowledging grantees' responsibility for and authority over the CHIP program and declaring emergency.
The words should be taken up, pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passing of Resolution number 63, 2022. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
If we're doing this resolution, that means we were awarded our CHIP grant. So, this is a good thing. I, uh, when I got the email from Representatives of Ohio, we from Development Corp., this is something new that the state is requiring to say that we are the grantee and Marshall County is our partner in this. There'll be another resolution later on when we get the actual grant agreements authorized and the mayor deciding at that time if this is just to identify who's the grantee and who's the partner.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Resolution number 63, 2022 passes.
Resolution number 64, 2022. Authorizing the mayor to issue a revocable permit to occupy the bright of way on West Main Street.
Will the resolution be taken, pass? Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passing of Resolution number 64, 2022. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
We remember when we did the downtown streetscape project, anyone who had an awning or anything in City Hall that was in the right way, we had to do these revocable permits that would allow for, to spend the federal money in there. So, this would be a new one where they want to apply, install an awning in front of that property at Shelby Mutual Insurance. So, this would just be keep in mind with everyone else. So, if we ever do have another project, we're already covered.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Resolution number 64, 2022 passes. Council's in time for miscellaneous business. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, do the council really do executive session? Consider the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property in competitive bidding. Give premature disclosure of the information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts to run the executive session for the purpose so read. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, if this motion passed, I would request that you, Mr. Geis, Ms. Gibbons, Mr. Ensmann, the Law Director and Finance Director of County Council do executive session.
Very good. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Council goes into the executive session at 7:39.